It's always going to be a work in progress. The award captures the importance of the setting's culture. Okay, so that's, you know, your bigger picture, your children, your families. And that can even be how you engage with your families, you know, before they even come into your setting as well. And it might be, you know, how you engage out with your setting, with your associated schools and community partners as well. And we're thinking of the bigger picture. So it's not about, you know, all the bits of digital technology we can see on the floor, okay? iPads and B-bots, it's not all about that. Think of your smaller pieces of digital technology or your behind the scenes tools. So my little boy's three, he started nursery in September, he's often grabbing my phone. And I'll say, because he's looking for YouTube, I'll be honest, that is what he's looking for, although I don't like him to have it, he knows what it is. And when I go to take the phone back, he'll say, oh, hold on, mum, I'm just going to check the weather. Okay, so he knows that that, you know, there is a tool that can tell him that. He also knows we can ask Alexa if it's going to rain today. And the children will know that as well. And it's just really about you being really clear and articulating, you know, oh, we're using this today and we're going to go for a walk, let's say, to the duck pond. We're going to use the map, we're going to use a digital map to plan our route. Do you know, I bet a lot of you are doing that already anyway, because you have to get your risk assessment in place. So, you know, you'll be, you'll be writing down, you know, where your starting point is, where your end point is. If you've got roads to cross, have you got bridges to go over, are there traffic lights, you know, what are the hazards and all of that? Some of you might know the local area really well, but you might have new staff that don't and they might have a wee look online. They probably also do a site visit first, but, you know, think of all these other tools that we can use to support these experiences for the children. And then what they can do as well to open up and extend the learning too. So that little picture there in the bottom right, just for context, that's just a screenshot taken from a device that was used on a local, a community walk that tracked the route. And then when they got back, that was printed out and it was in their floor book. And they were able to revisit that and talk about, you know, the route that they took and what they saw along the way as well. Okay, so what we're going to do first is have a wee think about how are we doing so far? Okay, now you might be thinking, oh, no, not this. And it's going soon, we know it's going soon, but there's something going to replace it. But just now, we're just going to keep using how good is EELC until we're told otherwise. And quality indicator 3.3 is our creativity and digital skills section. And we can use the challenge questions in there to ask us how we're doing. So, you know, before we start, before we have our plan and before we start to scribble down ideas for a strategy, it's that standing back, so how are we doing, you know, how do we know and what are we going to do now? And if you have a wee look at the three bullet points there, you might notice there's key words. Creativity, problem solving, enhance, deepen and personalise play and learning. And that's just what we do naturally in EELC, you know, across the curriculum, no matter what the subject is. So we're trying to think about how we can use the technology that we have creatively to allow us to problem solve and to deepen and personalise play and learning experiences. So we're going to touch on this little padlet activity today. But if you would rather and you're more comfortable using post-it notes, you just keep on using your post-it notes, okay? It's whatever works for you. If you're, you know, sitting in your staff teams already and you've got, you know, pens and paper out and you'd rather use that, that's fine. However, with the padlet, it gives you then a copy, if you like, to go back to. It's a working document, you can go back to it at any time and you can copy and paste out it as well, rather than having to retype notes and things like that. So I'm just going to make sure I have put the link into the chat as well, or you can scan the QR code. Okay, and what you will see, I'll just give you all a wee second to scan that. So we've put together a padlet just, you know, for ease of access, somewhere that's really clear that we can go back and revisit and all see each other's contributions as well. Because you might think, oh, you know, we're not, we're not doing anything, but we're not doing anything at all, but how are we doing? And then when you start to see the suggestions coming in or the opinions from other people, it'll get your head thing, you know, get you thinking, actually, I am doing a lot of this already. So just going to stop sharing this one and I will pull up this one. So it's nothing fancy, it's a really plain and simple padlet. And hopefully you're all able to see that. No, I've shared the wrong one, sorry about that. Screen, screen. Okay, so all, all we're going to do here is thinking about those key words there, the creativity, the problem solving, the enhancing, the deepen. And the, from the challenge questions, pop some ideas about, you know, where are you already, what is it you're doing? And what you can do is you can either use the little plus here and you can just add a comment. And you can also, if you've, you know, later on, if you want to just add on things like photograph evidence, you can do that as well. Just keep, keep me right, Pam, that, you know, you would need to make sure that you had, you know, appropriate permissions if the children were in those pictures, because it would be uploaded through. So you'll know yourself who you have permission for. I used to have a bit along the bottom of the laptop with the initials and the group colour of the children that didn't have permission to go on the blog. And I was absolutely neurotic checking it. Always had the fear that, you know, I would post somebody that didn't have permission and get in so much trouble. And that was even before GDPR, so.
Yeah, absolutely. No, yeah, that'd be fine, but yeah, they can just add, I mean, even if, if you're doing it on post-it notes just now, you could even take a picture of your post-it notes, if you've got a phone and add that in as well. So yeah, please do add, I saw, when I went on to a moment ago, I did see, oh, I could see some people starting to arrive and join us. So please tell us if you're having any problems getting in and you can put the QR code back up if that's easiest, just please let us know.
And then just as a wee reminder there, your sort of key questions from our National Self-Evaluation Guide around creativity and digital skills. What are we doing to ensure that we're enhancing learning? Are children recognising a range of technologies in their purpose? And do they know how to operate simple technological equipment? And what I would say about that is think about how, how they learn, you know, in any other context, symbolic play, role play. It doesn't have to be real pieces of working digital technology, you know, it could be a microwave, a microwave, a cardboard box microwave. I've, you know, I've seen those, you know, so many times over. So have a wee think, you know, it doesn't have to be actual working pieces of technology as well, because they're learning through role play and they're acting out things that they've saw, maybe their mum or dad uses a PC or a laptop at home. You know, they'll see the staff maybe taking pictures on iPads, you might still have digital cameras, you know, whatever the devices are you have. Just pop back, okay, see if we've got people writing, so that's fine. So what will happen is we'll just refresh it, I'll just give you a wee demo. How are we doing, where are we now, so children using, I can't spell children, oh dearie me, spell right. How do you use them? Using blocks. Okay, so just something as simple as that. And then once you hit return and, sorry, publish, there, someone's already done it there anyway, so. Okay, and then you can comment underneath as well. So I'm going to leave you with this padlet board and you can, you know, keep going in, checking what people are popping in, what their suggestions are. You can comment, you can like it. And it'll just be a really good sort of memory jogger for you as well from the conversations that we have here tonight. Okay, so that'll stay open, there's no closing date on that or anything, Pam. And, you know, you're, you're all, the link that I've shared it with, I think you can all, you can edit it as you please as well, so it's completely open. There's no moderation or anything on, so if you were going to be, you know, uploading photographs and things later on, then you would maybe need to best change those settings, because for now it's a completely open board, but you need to have the link to access it. Okay, so.
I think that'll be helpful for people can go back to it. And then if they like it, then they will be able to, as you say, set their own up and start dropping all their evidence into the kind of format, yeah.
And that might be something, you know, you might want a wee bit, a bit of support with Padlet and, you know, that's something that we can absolutely do, you know, as a wee sort of side session as well. So just let me find there, I couldn't get my, couldn't get my mouse there at all. Okidoki, window, here we go. Okay, so we're just going to briefly touch on setting improvement plans now, because we want to think about this, you know, as one, and it can be really difficult when we've got, you know, different areas for development going on. And, oh, we're writing a strategy for this, we're writing a strategy for that. And what I really hope that this session or this group indeed brings is that it can be all joined up, okay? So we all have improvement plans, you might call it a service plan, it might be called something different, but essentially it's a plan for the year that states what we want to achieve, it's got our clear actions, everyone who's involved knows about it. We know how it's going to be driven and we know when we are trying to achieve the actions by. So I mentioned at the start that Digital Schools Award, they look to see, they ask to see your improvement plan. So they want to see that digital technology is a priority. So this isn't, you know, a tokenistic, oh, we're just ticking a box, we're going for the award. They want to see, you know, that it is strategic and that everyone's involved. So I'm going to show some examples here of how we can do that without adding an additional priority to our improvement plans, okay? Because I'm sure many of you feel a bit like, just a second to come back to that, a bit like this. I know that, you know, pre-2018, when I was still in EELC, I felt like that. And, you know, there's a lot happened since then. So what can we do to make sure that, you know, we are taking this seriously? So as well as having a one-page strategy, we do want this to be, you know, a priority in our improvement plan. So it's going to help us when we come to write a strategy to know if it's working, okay? It's going to be our improvement plan, it's going to be whole team that's involved. It might not be a priority on its own, but it might be a driver to one of the actions, okay? And that's absolutely fine as well. So we've got some demo priorities here on the screen. So you can see we've just, you know, your literacy and numeracy and health and wellbeing, because for most of you, those will be actions, you know, those will be areas for improvement, sorry, on your improvement plan as well. I haven't got to show you, you know, or how should I say this? So every local authority set out their improvement plans completely differently. So in an ideal world, I would be able to show, you know, like a one that you can sort of relate to. But every local authority is very different. And when I met with my EELC team colleagues and, you know, because we sort of, we quality assured each other's work. And they said, there's, there's no way you can do this without confusing someone. So just keep it really simple, bullet points on the screen. So you might be looking at this thinking, what is that? That's not what my improvement plan looks like or my service plan looks like. But it was the best way that I could do it without causing mass confusion, okay? So these might be the priorities, they might be laid out completely different. So we're looking at literacy and English, okay? And an element of that that we want to improve in our setting is we're thinking of creative ways to capture feedback with digital technology. And numeracy and maths, you know, we know that we need to work on number measurement and estimation. So let's see where digital technology can help with that. And then in health and wellbeing, we want to look at, and we'll come to this shortly, but Lincoln was realising the ambition and what that tells us about creating these interesting spaces. So where can digital technology help us with that? Or it might be that one of your priorities are improving transitions, your everyday transitions, that would of course feed into literacy, numeracy and health and wellbeing as well. And it might be, well, what small pieces of technology that we've got access to can help do that? You know, what can we use to help prepare children, to help children understand, to, you know, make it visual and to show them the sequences of the day? So again, just for demos purpose here, just some bullet points underneath. So the task then highlighted in yellow, really clear, simple language, because we need everyone to be able to understand. Now, on your actual improvement plan, of course, you would have, you know, maybe columns or it might be underneath, rows underneath saying, you know, who would be involved and what the time scale is, whether it was a short term or a long term, you know? And it may also detail who the target group is, okay? Is it all children, almost all? You know, you, you would have that much clearer on your plan. But this is really to show you that, you know, you can be clever with, with your digital technology use. And it can be a driver rather than adding it as an additional ask onto your existing priorities as well, okay? So really simple things here, talking buttons, voice recording apps, anything that can sort of capture the children's voice, okay? I don't know what devices you all have access to, I know everybody's very different, but you know, whatever is built in, that's we would always say, just go with what's built in. Don't overcomplicate it and just go with what's built in as well. And then thinking of your number and measurement, could it be something like digital scales, talking scales? Do you know that you can, you can get little, it's like a little miniature trundle wheel now, it's a little tape measure, but there's no tape that comes out and you can just pull it along and push it along. And then the numbers, the centimetres go up on the screen as well. Or again, basic measure apps, if you have access to devices to. And it's, again, it's not to say this is the way to do it, it's all digital, it's an option. You know, it's to give children the options to solve problems creatively and as well to show that digital technology is, is not all about, you know, watching videos on YouTube or, you know, playing talk-a-boka games, although I do quite like talk-a-boka games, but that's the first one that sprung to mind there. So it's, you know, about that purposeful use of technology. Oops, went too fast there. And then in terms of the health and wellbeing priority, we linked the ten interesting spaces. So what, what would that look like? Okay, so it might be something really simple, like light up toys, you know, you probably already have some things that light up, you know, for in your water tray. But let's look at them, how could we, you know, use them maybe to, I don't know, some of you might work with even younger children as well, but with your babies or your toddlers with the sort of cause and effect learning. Or it might be projections based on their interests as well. So let's see, we'll go back to the block corner again, so we were talking about the children making, using the blocks to symbolise iPads to take photographs. What could we have, you know, what is the interest there? Could we have, you know, a photo slideshow either being projected onto the wall or using one of your panels? If your panels are on wheels, great, you can move that around. If not, do we have the flexibility to, you know, move our areas, move our spaces nearer the panel? So the panel can be used, you know, to sort of provide that sort of immersive background instead of children using it to play a game? So just some different ideas there. And then it's a case of, well, with all that in mind, how can we create a one-pager that clearly articulates our vision and our aims or objectives, whatever you want to call them, that will help us to get there, okay? And a one-pager is absolutely fine, it does not have to go into any more detail, because you will have actions in your improvement plan as well. So that's where it all links up. So I said at the beginning, there's, sorry.
Sorry Eva, I've just stuck in the chat. I've just to show you what our improvement plan looks like.
Brilliant, okay.
So I just, I just took, it's actually from St Anne's who are on the call. So it's just there, rationale for change, outcome and expected impact, measures and interventions. So it's already there, so what I'm saying is make the links back.
Yeah, brilliant, that's great. And I, I actually, before this session started in August during the summer, I've done a few mock improvement plans using the NIF priorities, because I really wanted to have, you know, something to show to, to be able to make that link. But as I said, yeah, it was best that I avoid it, because every local authority does things differently, yeah.
So I just thought it'd be useful to say at the end, just to remind everybody you've already done it. You know, it's already there and so all that stuff just links in so well with what you were saying about how to expand on it. So yeah, just, just for information.
Thanks Pam for that. So yeah, I said earlier on, there's no one size fits all approach, no two settings the same, what works well for one, you know, it might not for the other. We're continually on this learning curve and it's not linear, is it? You know, we can have really positive improvements some years, then other years, you know, it can dip and it can be a wee bit slower or a wee bit lower. And it's just, it's about getting to know our learners, isn't it? We're always learning, we're always trialling and discovering what works and what doesn't work. And it's about that considered approach to technology and about us making the informed decisions about when we don't use technology as well. You know, and it might just be, you know, there's certain times of the day or, you know, there, there might be patterns in children's behaviour or there's certain things that trigger children. So for that reason, you know, we have decided as a staff that actually we're not going to do, you know, X, Y or Z. And that is important as well, because that is knowing your learners and that's about making informed decisions. And if, I can also share, I forgot to say this at the start as well, some research papers, we started to put things up on our blog as well, some food for thought. Because I know that quite a few settings might have families that are a wee bit hesitant or a wee bit, you know, don't want to say frightened, because it's maybe not frightened, but just a bit wary about digital technology, because they don't fully understand, you know, the capabilities and, you know, all the different forms and, you know, what it can do for children's learning. And that can be tough as well, especially, you know, when you're coming to, to, to seek advice or to seek opinions from your parents when you're writing your policies, you might have some, what would we do, naysayers, as we say, so it's, yes. They know your why and, you know, being able to confidently articulate and say, you know, I, I understand, you know, I'm, I'm hearing your concerns, but I know, say, and, you know, we're using technology for da-da-da-da-da, for whatever reasons, okay? Yeah, so it might be, you know, enhancing transitions, finding our place in our local communities, effective contributors as well. So, you know, it could be, there's a, you'll be able to rhyme it all off yourself, so many reasons as to why and why not using digital technology, okay? So coming together today and then in the follow-up sessions will help you to get that clear vision, okay? And realising the ambition, that reminds us about a clear co-created vision as a, you know, being our starting point. So that's based on the needs of the children in our settings and our wider setting and our place in the local authority. And of course, the priorities of our local authority as well. Realising the ambition reminds us that effective settings have a, when they have a clear and shared vision for what they would like their provision to be and what they want for children and their care, you know, that's what works best. The vision should be based on the unique needs of your children and families in your setting. You'll probably see now the links between the Digital Schools Award and how it's worded and realising the ambition here. Developing a vision that is co-created by us with the children and families means that everyone is working together for the best interests of the children. It's important to refresh the vision from time to time to ensure that it remains relevant to the community you work within. So exactly what we've said already. You might identify additional areas along the way, you know, you might think, ah, okay, so skills and knowledge of practitioners, right, okay, that's something we need to work on. And that's fine, but what you'll also see is things that you're, you're doing really well too, that you've maybe not given yourself credit for already. So in terms of using the technology for problem solving or to create interest in outdoor spaces, indoor and outdoor spaces. And what does realising the ambition tell us about that? What does it say? So I won't read this one out. And then it talks about, it gives a little paragraph on context and it talks about children learning about should it be signature sharks? And when, you know, you can have these images on your interactive panel to give children, you know, a, a, a visual, a really clear idea of this difference in size between, you know, a fish and a shark. That's not what it says, don't quote me on that, but that's what, that's what it talks about. But you can have a wee look there yourself, okay? Now, could that be your vision statement on your one-page strategy? Or the rationale for, for why you're making improvements in digital technology? Could it be? I would say, yeah. If it all sits well with you and you're happy with it, then I would use it, you know, as long as you reference that, of course. But, you know, why not, why reinvent the wheel? Or you might tweak it slightly, so this is just my wee demo one here, but again, very closely worded with realising the ambition, okay? So this might be my sort of overarching aim at the start of my policy. Policy, I keep jumping between policy and strategy, but it means that it's the same thing. Although if you were in a PLL session with a professional learning leadership team, they'd probably tell you otherwise, so don't tell anybody I said that. Okay, so carefully considered supporting children. But this one mentions at the bottom to safely explore and create interesting spaces, okay? Because that's something that I think is super important. You know, with all the access and all the encouragement to, to use digital technology, we must be making sure children are equipped. You know, to start, to lay the foundations of being able to do that safely. Okay, so once you've got your overarching aim or your vision statement, it's then the breakdown, isn't it, that we want to fit onto one page, okay? So the smaller steps, how are we going to achieve that vision? So you might want to use the four objectives from the national strategies. This strategy has been around now since 2016, I do believe. A refresh has been worked on soon, however, it's still, you know, it still stands, this is why our team was created. You know, was for the rollout and to support that strategy, so you could use that. You might want to use your digital learning strategy from Renfrew as well. So you might want to sort of mirror that and look at what your individual aims would look like. You might want to use AI, this is a wee homework for you that I forgot to mention at the start. So jump onto generative AI on Bing or, you know, whatever, you know, you might not be able to access this on your, your school devices, but you know, just for a wee, a wee bit of fun almost, you could try it on your own device. So what I asked it to do first was write a one-page policy for a Scottish EELC setting on digital technology. Okay, so you could see there was bits lifted from the national strategy, but it, it, yeah, it needed a bit of work. So then the second time I asked it the same prompt, but at the end I added through play. So the second time I said, write a one-page policy for a Scottish EELC setting on digital technology through play. And it more or less went to the Digital Schools Award and churned out lots of bits of text from the Digital Schools Award, which I was, I was quite impressed with, because that's, you know, only been in existence for not even a year yet, so. I didn't use any of them in the end, but, you know, if you were looking for it, just, just as a wee homework exercise, just to see what it gives you. And, you know, you might be able to use it as a starting point if, if you're happy with it. You might.
I was just going to say, we are a Google authority, so the gemini is common. Yep, so just to drop that in and also to say about the Renfroshire digital strategy. So that is being refreshed this session as well. So hopefully throughout this session, well, we've had changes, so we've now got a new head of education, so it's going in a slightly different direction. But hopefully by the end of this session, we'll have a new refreshed digital, Renfroshire digital strategy that links into our coming up refreshed learning and teaching strategy, so it's all coming at the one time.
It's never ending, it's never ending. We just don't get a minute's pieces, that's the thing, it's always changing. Okay, you might also want to base it down to five areas in the Digital Schools Award, that might make more sense to you. It's entirely up to you, it's whatever you feel comfortable with, whatever you think's the easiest and, you know, uses up the least amount of time. For me, because I knew the digital learning and teaching strategy pretty well and because it only had four areas, I decided that I would just use this in the demo, okay? So that vision statement, that overarching aim, how am I going to get there, okay? So these are the four objectives that we need to work on to get us there, all right? So they're all almost the exact same as what's in the national strategy. However, in area two, I've elaborated a wee bit on the literacy, numeracy and health and wellbeing experiences. I can already see something that I need to add in section three there, improved setting access to digital technology. I would like to add something in there about safely and securely, just so that it's really clear. And we'll come back to that in just a wee second, okay? and we'll come back to that, um, just in a wee second, okay, so. I'm not going to do this right now, just for time's sake, but it is there for you. And in that padlet, what we have is we have four columns for each of the four objectives there. Um, and you're welcome to start adding things underneath, so almost like subheadings or subactions. So what would developing the skills and confidence look like in our settings, you know, what would the specific things be? All right, so, and it might be things like, well, you know, we, we need to assign some time to do this, we, we need protected time, okay? We need to know where we're at already, are there specific things that, um, you know, our team need a wee bit of support with? So it might be that you do, you know, an audit, it could be a confidence audit, a skills audit, you know, whatever, um, it is you want to, to call it, um. And then how, how do we ensure that we are, um, developing the skills and confidence, you know, what does our training programme look like? Are we going to, you know, block off what I would call tinker time, so that, you know, if you do have bits of kit that you've never used before, that you're getting a bit of time, um, you know, to, to become comfortable and confident with them, um, yourself. And it might just be, you know, knowing how to charge it, knowing how to change the batteries, it's, you know, it's, what this award wants to do is pull everyone along on the journey, so it's not just going to be the one person, you know, um, sailing the boat, everyone or flying the plane, whatever they're saying, as again, I don't know, I can't remember now, I'm getting hysterical, but, you know what I mean? Um, and then what might digital technology that's carefully considered across our curriculum involve? So what do we need to identify here? Okay, and these things might already be in your improvement plan, okay, so you might have them already. Okay, but it's just to give you a little bit of food for thought as to, you know, how can we reach that aim? What is it that we need to do, what things, um, might we consider to help us to get there? Now, I did have the cyber resilience and internet safety in there, but I think for me in this, I would add it into the, the title, um, for the heading, um, for number three for the third aim, just to make it really clear. And then of course, going for the award, that, that's a huge part of this leadership change part, isn't it? Because, um, you know, that, that's a bit, a, a big step for a lot of us and it's really important that that's recognised and celebrated as well. Um, and I don't know, um, about some of the settings you're in, but I remember when I was in a set and my head teacher was an absolute like trophy hunter. She loved, you know, entered in us, if there was a pilot, she'd, yeah, we'll do it, we'll do it. You know, she liked certificates and awards and things like that, um. So, you know, you, you might be doing this, um, for that reason, or hope, hopefully, hopefully you're not, hopefully, um, you're all here because you want to be here, um. Now, this is one of the videos that I mentioned at the start as well, I'm not going to play this just now, i- it's optional, you can go back to it later on if you want. But what we have here is just a little capture, um, of practitioners in two thousand and eighteen talking about the impact of their digital strategy, okay? And how they, um, how they, you know, felt they had developed and changed once it was created and how it pulled them all together. So the link, um, is there in the video as in this slide as well. Um, so what I wanted to do instead was have a wee bit of time at the end, just to go over things and if there's any questions. But before we do that, I just wanted to show you some little quotes here that have been taken from the Digital Schools Awards, um, reports, okay? So this is looking at the leadership and vision section and just some little highlights, just to give you a feel for the kind of things, um, that the validators pick up on. Okay, so they knew about the national strategy. There was distributive leadership, so, you know, somebody was sort of flying that flag, somebody was driving it. But all staff, you know, were making improvements or, um, developing confidence, um, as well. Okay, so that's just one example, so that's an older one from two thousand and eighteen. Okay, this is a newer one, just from last year. So they were recognised for linking in and working closely with their local authority, um, digital officers. That was just making sure, you know, that they were aware of, um, priorities within their local authority. But they were, you know, they were also keeping themselves right, um, things like GDPR and, you know, going back and forward, you know, sharing their strategy, their draft strategy and just, you know, asking for, um, feedback and advice on it. They also linked in with, you can see there, Police Scotland and Call Scotland as well and other organisations, just to make sure that they were doing the most they could for the children, um, that needed the support. So Police Scotland, that, that would be in terms of, um, internet safety and cyber resilience. Call Scotland are, um, if you've not heard of them, they're based in Edinburgh University, so they're an organisation that provides, um, support with assistive and argumentative communication, um, devices. Um, you know, they have various, um, offers of support, dyslexia, um, various ASN, um, support needs as well, they have loan banks of digital technology. Um, and you might recognise from the, you know, the back of the book bug bags, that there's a, a, a little note or a QR code to Call Scotland. They may call the symbolised resources as well, um, for the book bug bags. And then this one was from two thousand and twenty-two, just after, um, the pandemic. Okay. So it was recognised, you know, that you, you can't be at the sort of the end, um, or the finish line and everything, okay? So it was recognising, you know, what they were planning, you know, to continue to keep on improving as well. Okay, so this was before they had introduced the online learning journals. Okay. And there was plans, um, to audit practitioner's skills to keep going, you know, to, to identify those training needs and, and then to put those into place. Okay, so I wanted to show that one as well because it's not, you know, th- they, they might have been further along the line in other sections of the, um, the framework, but this one in particular, there was a lot of working towards and partly because it just, you know, they had just gone back, it had just come out of, um, the lockdown, um, era. And I'm trying to think who else it was, I'm sure it was two thousand and twenty-two, yeah.
Just, just when you were saying there about, you know, the audit of practitioner skills, Eva, just stuck in the, yeah, the, improving your digital skills from the Digital Learning Scot ELC page. And there's a nice wee bit at the bottom about the create, store and share resources, communicate with peers, create and manage online staff collaboration spaces and accessibility skills, just to get folk thinking, if, if that's, do you know, so it's just another place to go to.
And although, that's, eh, the audit works for everyone, although it might feel a wee bit scully, it's kind of set in the school context, however you, you know, you can picture it, I'm sure, in the ELC setting as well. It was something that we discussed recreating for ELC. But I, I'll be really honest, I said, no, there's just, there's enough, um, guidance out there, um, already, I don't want to bombard people. Um, but yes, you are very welcome to use it and if there's any, you know, questions or anything that's not very clear about it, get in touch and, you know, we can have a wee chat about that. So we also have a team space on Glow, so there's a national team called the DSA Scotland team. And in there we have a channel called the ELC Network. So in between sessions, this is just a really useful place, you know, if you want to reach out. Um, and you're welcome to email me as well, whatever you're comfortable with, um, or use the, the, the private chat message. But, you know, if you wanted to see what's going on, um, and other local authorities in that ELC network channel, within the files tab, there's, um, folders for the other local authorities, um, that I'm working with. But the best part is in there, I also have all the reports from all the nursery settings that have the Digital Schools Award already. So the reports are in there, um, they're not published on the web or anything, but I do have permission, um, to share them with you through the team. So if you want to go in, if you've got a bit of time, I know who has time, you'd be saying, but, you know, if you did want to go in and get a feel for, you know, more of the sort of report comments, you are more than welcome to go in there and have a look. And, you know, there's also, if you're stalling it a bit and you think, God, you know, what, what does it look like, um, for us? Go in and have a wee look, um, you know, we're not saying that that is the way to do it because everybody is individual, eh, all your settings are so unique, as we said. But it might just get you thinking, um, or, or as a starting point, I should say, so that is the code to the team and I will pop the link to the team in as well, just letting you do that, my other. So I don't forget.
I just always think it's useful to have these spaces where you can go and ask other people, because then you're not in it on your own.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, and just, just to even, um, I, what else was I going to say? I've, I've asked them to share, the people that already have the awards, to start sharing some examples, um, of the evidence that they gathered for the Digital Schools Award as well. And, you know, future sessions that come up, eh, not in tonight's session, but future sessions that come up, we're going to dip in and out of them. So I'll be able to show you what they actually presented, um, to Digital Schools Award as well, just to give you more again, more of a feel for it. And we'll talk more about that at the next session, but how you present that and how you gather that, you know, is absolutely up to you. If, you know, you are using maybe something like SWE or you've seen your Google authority, maybe use Google Sites or the Google Slides, whatever it is you're comfortable with, you know, as long as you can share a link to it, um, then that's absolutely fine. But we'll speak more about that in the next session, so don't worry about that just now, just now, we're just trying to think about our vision, what is it that we do want, um, to achieve, you know, and how might we get there? Now, Pam's already shared the link there, thanks Pam, um, to the improvement section. But on our, um, Digital Learning Scot blog and all the links are on the slides, we've got these six sections for ELC, okay? So these are useful places as well, if you want to have a wee browse through these, um, just sort of to get your, your, your notes down, your draft down on paper. Um, we also have national webinar running as well, so you'll see on the, the black bar along the top there, if you click on that webinar, it'll take you to the webinar calendar. There's things happening every week, um, so coming up at the end of the month, we've got, um, a s- a session for Safer Internet Day essentially, so Safer Internet Day will happen in February. But we're going to do a session for early and first level, just, you know, to prepare for that, to get ahead of the game a wee bit. Not just looking at the resources that Safer Internet Day are saying, um, you know, we're using this year, but a wee bit wider than that with resources that are actually tried and tested, that we feel are, you know, developmentally appropriate. Um, so that's an information session. And then Cyber Scotland Week, that happens the week after at the end of February. We of course have sessions coming up for that, um, but these are in the form of what we call read-alogs. So you don't need to do anything other than sign up, um, log in and the children, um, you know, are able to hear and see. And then, you know, we, we do everything, um, from there, but we have a various different forms, um, of the read-along based on the story, but the bongos, um, you might be familiar with that already. But again, we'll touch on that more in a future session, but the bongos, um, are flying the flag for creating secure passwords using three random words, okay? So it's a story, um, that helps children to, you know, become aware of the importance of that, um, for future cybersecurity. And we have a read-along session, we also have a session we call Scotland, where we use a lot of the visual supports that they've created. Um, because this, of course, eh, the bongos book is in the book bug bags. Um, and we also have a session for children in the Gaelic medium education as well, so few things going on there. Um, but I just, yeah, I wanted to give us, you know, five, 10 minutes here at the end, just to, um, ask any questions, you know, if there's anything that you want to go over again, you know, if anybody's thinking, oh, I am a hero, um, you know, I don't want anybody to be feeling like that. Like I said, you know, at the start, there's no, you know, big rush for this, it's, you know, things happen, we'll just work through it gradually. We're here in between, you know, you can get in touch, you can join the team, um, in between sessions, we've got the padlet, you know, and we're all going to support one another here. So I don't, don't want anybody to leave this call feeling, you know, huge pressure, the, oh, no, have I signed up to it? You know, it's not about that at all and, you know, for some of you, things might happen and you might, it might not be the right time to go ahead and, um, you know, submit your validation evidence for the award. But coming along to the sessions, you know, coming along, um, and, you know, learning along the way, that's, that's hugely important as well. So I hope you've enjoyed the first session, um, we're going to look at things, more things next week, eh, or next session, I'll have lots more photographs. This, this one is a mostly heavy, um, session where we're really starting at the beginning and we're thinking, well, what is it we want? Um, you know, for our setting, but I promise the, the rest won't, the, the rest won't hurt your head.